All right, here we go. Good evening. I'm ready now. I will call to order the November first, 2023 Chico Unified School Board meeting and workshop, thank you. And I will ask for everybody to please stand for the flag salute. All righty. The next item on our agenda is announcements. Are there any board members that have announcements to make at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move along to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item from consent this evening? Okay, do we have public comments on consent? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move acceptance of the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by member Lando.
A second.
And a second by member Conken. Any further discussion, board? Okay. Those in favor of approval of the consent calendar, please, let's do a voice vote, starting with Mr. Lando.
Lando aye.
Tennesse aye.
Dolby aye.
Robinson aye.
Conken aye.
All right, it's unanimous, it passes. We'll move on to item number four. Item four is the board workshop. This is an informational item. The November board workshop topic is the review of the 2223 Chico Unified results from the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. That's the CASP. I am prevented, prevented. Wow, we're gonna prevent it, right? No, just kidding, presented by Tim Karas.
Good evening.
There we go.
Nice and loud. Thank you for bearing with us. I've moved over here just to make sure I had connection to the keyboard and the mouse. This evening, we're going to be discussing the Spring 2023 CASP results that were released publicly on October 18th in Smarter Balanced English and Math, as well as the California Science Test results that were not released publicly. But we would like to include those in tonight's presentation as well. So tonight, we're going to talk about where CASP fits into our overall use of assessments, our assessment system in Chico Unified. I'll give you a brief overview of the CASP system as a whole. Talk about the data lifecycle in Chico Unified. From the time that we test to the time, to how we use the data, how we analyze it, and use it on an ongoing basis in future years. Then finally, we will get to our Chico Unified English Language Arts and Math, publicly released aggregated results from the state, as well as the California Science Test. Those results were locally aggregated by us. There's been no public release of the science test scores. So where CASP fits into a balanced assessment system? The first and most important piece of an assessment system is formative classroom assessment. This is teachers giving, able to give quick assessments that may not look anything like a bubble test or a computer online test. These are checks for understanding and allow the teacher to give timely feedback. By far the most important piece of assessment in K-12 education. Next, we have our formative and summative common benchmark assessments in Chico Unified. We are fortunate enough to have a number of DLC members here. If you could raise your hands real quick. And these are the folks, some of the folks, not all DLC members are here. But that group as a whole decides what assessments are important enough for every, every teacher across a grade level or a grade level span or department to give in Chico Unified, and assists with the implementation of those assessments. We use those in order to keep, keep tabs on our, on our kids' learning throughout the year in a standardized fashion across the district so that we can collaborate across sites, collaborate within departments, within grade levels at the elementary. And essentially, we're checking for understanding and making sure our students are ready for the annual Summit of Assessments, number, the third bullet there. And that in Chico Unified is the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. And that's a mouthful, so we just say CASP. And that, those are the only true summative assessments. At times, we will utilize reading level assessments, locally given, and manage reading level assessments as a summative at the end of the year. But for the most part, our summative assessments rest in the CASP system. So there's many components to the CASP system. The most, most people are familiar with Smarter Balanced English and Math. Also, testing English and math for our students with the most severe disabilities is the California Alternatives Assessment, the CAH. For science, grades five, eight, and 11 are administered the California Science Test or CAST. The California Alternate Assessment for Science also is meant to be given to those students with the most severe disabilities. We also have the Spanish reading, we also have the California Spanish Assessment administered in Chico. It currently, it's only administered by Rosedale. It is a test in Spanish. What we're gonna focus on tonight is English and Math Smarter Balanced and the California Science Test. No other, like I mentioned earlier, we have state aggregated results for math and Language Arts, but not for science. Implications of, of the results. First of all, this data is shown in a different form on the, on the California State Dashboard. And the dashboard will come out in mid, mid-December, December 15th. And that is what's used by the, by the state to hold us accountable for what we are doing. There's both, both state and federal accountability measures that are based on our dashboard data. So this data, as it comes out, is really to publicly, publicly release this data to the whole state, the whole world, allow us to view aggregate results and compare to other, other school districts. It's used as a college readiness measure, used for English lang, English learner reclassification. And really, what we use this data for is more of a broad programmatic evaluation. Where are holes essentially is what we're looking for? And what do we need to do more of, what's going well? Teachers and other collaborative groups such as DLC also look on it for, for reflection. And it's also part of our Local Control and Accountability Plan Evaluation, our LCAP. So there's a lot of limits to this data. Number one, results are reported for overall scores and claims. And these are, claims are very broad sets of standards. So no teacher can look at their, their results and say, "This is exactly what I missed last year, and I need to do a better job on this, this standard or this standard." It's, it's much, much broader than that. Currently, we have no claim data, which is a set of standards. All crunched together into an example would be Listening and Speaking for English Language Arts. So all the standards that fall under Listening and Speaking, and there might be, you know, 20, are, are given in a single aggregate for, for Listening and Speaking. But all three of these tests we're gonna discuss tonight have those. But no claim data is, is given to us on a student level. So no teacher knows exactly which students scored low on Listening and Speaking, for, for example.
Is that something that is forthcoming, but just hasn't gotten there yet as the state builds out the, the testing program? Or is it something that we shouldn't expect to come out?
It's something that we shouldn't expect. I, I hope it comes, but we shouldn't expect, we had that for years in English and Ling, English and Math. However, with, with the pandemic, the state shortened the test. And so there's not enough data in a single student's test data to say whether or not that single student mastered a certain claim or not. However, when they look at the entire set of aggregate dat, data points, they do have enough data. And so they release those for groups of students in the aggregates only now. And I expect us to stay with a shortened blueprint, the shortened test from here on out. And another limitation to this data is teachers don't get this data until way after the fact. To be really actionable, teachers need to get, get the data almost instantaneous and be able to act on that with their kids in the moment. That's the importance of formative assessment that I, I mentioned earlier.
Tim, this, this is an area that our DLC is, is involved with trying to get our formative data as soon as possible and get it to the teachers so that those teachers that need to be able to identify which student in the class that's sitting before them has a gap. And, and that they can treat to it, you know, almost as quickly as they are instructing and then reviewing whether or not a student needs to be re-taught a certain.
Exactly.
Okay, so explain how that's working. If, if the state isn't involved and we are doing it, what is it exactly that we do through the approved stuff that the DLC has worked on to get that happening?
So we do a wide variety of things, so I'll focus on a, on a couple. One example is, is junior high math, for example. Junior high math teachers administer the IXL assessment. And what that assessment does is it goes beyond the skills that are taught in the course. What it does is it goes, it adjusts to find the, the holes in the student's earlier learning. What does a student need to remediate, essentially? And then gives the teachers tools to assign work and, and review of those remedial skills. That's, that's one example of, of how that process works at the junior high.
Do we do this IXL thing at all grade levels?
We don't. We have a variety of assessments at a variety of grade levels. IXL currently is only given at the secondary level and not all high school grade levels. And we have a wide variety of, that's really a whole separate workshop as a local assessment. A wide variety of assessments at elementary that are meant to specifically diagnose what students need to learn, essentially.
Neil Dow has a program that's doing that. That's the only school I'm familiar with because that's the only one I visited and got informed on. So what, what Neil Dow does is where we would like to have all of our elementaries.
What Neil Dow does is done at all of our elementary schools, for example. It doesn't look different, absolutely. There's different, you know, funding that's available to different schools and things like that. Each school puts their different flavor on it. One of the things that we've been happy to be able to do over the past couple of years is implement reading interventions via our reading specialists at our, at our elementary sites. And now the, the cohesion that that group has is now growing to include Title I teachers that really are there for the same purpose. They might be doing a little something different in groups, but we're bringing the Title I teachers in with the reading specialists to be more cohesive, to have a more cohesive approach at the elementary level. So the lifecycle of data, and this, yes.
Um, can you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
Oh, we didn't touch on the last bullet here.
Oh, yeah.
Aggregated data?
Yeah, thank you.
You said, I don't need to read your slide.
So the aggreg, aggregated data from the state is, is like one way we get a report card. You know, it, it's a report card for the public. It gives us information to reflect on within our district. And it also allows us to, to go out into the state and look for similar schools and similar districts and see how we're doing compared to them. One thing that you're all very well aware of is that different student groups perform different, differently throughout the state. And so the, the district makeup is gonna affect how your overall scores look. So we go out and we look for sites, schools, and districts that are similar to ours.
I think we could say the same within our own district, right? Like, we see data that supports that schools that are not Title I schools are significantly different, and I use that word specifically for this reason statistically, than, than our non-Title I schools. And we see the scores be different between the two.
We see differences in our, in our district? Absolutely. Same thing I was mentioning before about looking out at outside districts, you know? The, the population of a school is gonna, generally going to have an effect on, on the, the test results.
The scores that we're seeing.
Right. And, you know, I think everybody's sick of hearing us talk about multi-tiered system of supports, probably, but that's crucial.
What's that acronym again?
MTSS, thanks. That's crucial to closing those gaps.
I'm, so on this bullet, one of the questions I had initially written down was, this is almost a philosophical question, right? Not necessarily what I expect an answer for, is how do these specific scores impact our students individually? Sounds like they don't. Our schools, maybe a little bit, or schools are looking at what are other schools in our district doing? Are there differences that are driving our scores? Or are we doing the best we can with, with the programs we have? And then our district overall, as we're comparing, you know, like districts in the state with us.
Right.
How is this specific data informing us in, in the decisions that we're making?
I'll give, I'll give you an example. We saw, two years ago, we saw really high math achievement. And we looked at that and we tried to replicate that the best we could across all the elementaries. And what you'll see in a few minutes here is elementary looked very, very good in math in particular because of that, because we identified, okay, this, this site's doing really, really well. Let's replicate that. So we really start looking at data in June. It's, it's gotten harder and harder. Over the last few years, the state's been a little wonky with their releases of data. But this year, we did get preliminary results in June. I turn those around as fast as I can because we get a student file and send them, send those out to our administrators this year. Now, I would do DLC as well. We gave them licenses to the software that we use for that. In August, we're bringing our administrators back together and, and looking at the data, reflecting on how we did, what we need to do differently, et cetera, et cetera. Sites are presented with, with the data upon return to school. And then the public release comes out in October. Now, the difference between the publicly, public release in October and all the data we've been looking, looking at since, since May is that the results that the state gives us prior to the aggregates are student-level data that we have to crunch. And we have a few different systems that we use to, to crunch that data. And so it's not public, so the public hasn't seen it yet. But the October is kind of, you know, it's one of our report cards throughout the year to, to the public. In December, the state dashboard comes out. And I gave a presentation on that in February. And then we use that for looking back on this year. We use it to measure growth for next year and years beyond.
Tim, on the subject of data lifecycle, our LCAP development and all those meetings and things, we're, we're basically looking at and reacting to last year's data. But if, I peeked and looked ahead at your presentation, it looks as though there is now an, an ability to look at, at consistency in our data rather than big highs and lows.
Right.
Am I wrong about that?
No, you, you're right. We're relatively consistent across the board.
So the fact that we are building any changes or enhancements to our LCAP is, is an okay thing because we have good reliable data flow from the previous year.
Right. And for academics, we're not just looking at English and Math as well. We're looking at, you know, local assessment data, grad rates, CTE completion rates, et cetera, et cetera. So the English and Math publicly released data is not, there's no cohorts in here. There's different inclusion and exclusion rules for students than on the state dashboard. So this will be a slightly different student set than you'll see on the state dashboard. Like I said before, we use it to identify similar schools and districts across the state. There's no state accountability attached to this. Really, the accountability is in our school board and our public. Currently, we only have English and Math results, and it's a much different focus than the state dashboard data. That focus is primarily on how much did we grow or not? This is just, here's the data. There's no focus on growth. The locally aggregated data on the CASP test, that was, we'll see, again, no statewide aggregates available, and we process this data internally. So first, I'm gonna dive into the Smarter Balanced, Balanced English and Language Arts and Math. Okay, so what you see here on the left-hand side is English Language Arts, and on the right is Math. Chico Unified is on the left, State of California is on the right for both displays. What you'll see is that the green dot indicating 21, 22 data and the blue dot indicating last year's data are essentially right on top of each other. And what that tells us is minimal change from the previous year. We can also see that we're above the state averages in both English and Math. And we essentially mirrored the trends of the state. For Smarter Balanced ELA, we actually went down 0.2 percentage points. So 0.2 percentage points, the state went down four. For math, we went up 1.1 percentage points, and the state went up 1.2. So we're pretty much, almost exactly mirroring the state trends here. One thing I should point out is, on the first chart is, what you see here, the, the axis is percent of students who met or exceeded standards. Okay, so that's what we're looking at with this data. Percent of students, of students meeting or exceeding standards. So you can see we're right around the 55% mark for ELA and right around the 40% mark for math. We're actually right at the 40% mark for math.
Tim?
Yeah.
I've, we've talked about this before, but these standards are, where they come from is a bit of an enigma to me. But I, I think that you said there are just experts who know what the standard is, and that's where this comes from. Could you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, sure. The, the tests, these tests are built by the Smarter Balanced Consortium. And that's, that's where, when you hear people say SBACK, Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. That's a multi-state consortium of, it's a, it's an organization that is building tests around the common core state standards. And they serve a, a number of states. The two biggest consortiums in, in America are PARC and, and Smarter Balanced. And those are the big consortiums. States that have not adopted Smarter Balanced or PARC tests have changed those tests very, very minimally in general with, you know, giving their, the flavor from their state to those tests. But generally, they're, they're very similar. PARC and Smarter Balanced are, are the two big ones, though. And those are the consortiums that build these.
Tell me what you know about the, the experts who decide what is the standard.
Made up of psych... Uh, made up of psychometricians, um, for the most part in my world, that's where they're, I'm, I'm concerned with. Um, psychometricians, um, professional test builders, essentially. That's what they are. The Common Core standards themselves, I can't really speak to.
It's a bold statement to say that, you know, um, sixty percent of, of all kids in, in California's public school system are, um, you know, not able to perform basic where they're supposed to be functions in math, you know? And forty percent or, or fifty percent are basically kind of illiterate on some level, not where they're supposed to be. So I'm just really fascinated by who these people are. And I'm surprised there's not more curiosity, like burning curiosity out there to know more about them, where these standards come from, or they do arbitrary. Anyway, thanks.
I, I think on, on an extension of that, I'm sitting here wondering, what about this data do you find useful?
What I, this data right here tells me, we went with the state trend overall. Um, that's
And that could be, the test could have changed. We could have all adopted the same practices. I mean, there's so many variables going to this that this, to me, from my much more naive seat here than your position, is data doesn't really tell us much of anything about our, about our student population.
Right. This data in particular does, right. That's why we disaggregate it further.
Yeah. Like, it's nice to say, oh, we did slightly better than the rest of the state on average. But, I mean, kind of harkening back to that, like, okay, but sixty percent, we're saying, are not meeting the, the math standards.
And really what this does, here's a, what I try to do is add context to data.
Sure.
Um, looking at a data point out of context is essentially meaningless. I mean, I could come in here and say, you know, hopefully someday we went up ten percentage points. And without context, if the state went up, if the average school district in California went up twenty percent, then we have a big problem.
Right.
Right?
Yes. And, and, and I think on that note, the other piece that I'm questioning while I'm sitting here looking at this data point is where, what are, what's the spread from last year to this year on the students who did not meet or exceed the standards? I'm sure that data's here somewhere, but like, did students who are at the very bottom make a bigger improvement? Or, you know what I mean? Like, we're talking about the, bridging the gap of, of where they, where they were last year to this year, or where we performed from last year to this year, like, that seems like valuable data also.
That's hugely valuable data. And you're gonna see that, um, in the CAS data that we, that we show later.
Do we not get it from the CAS?
We don't get it in, um, the aggregates that we need from the CAS.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
It's on the state level. Sometimes the state
Yeah, what, the big difference between this data and the, um, the dashboard data is just that, what you're talking about. And that's why we generally look, unless the state tells us to look at, uh, percentage met or above, um, and it's released to the public, we generally look at distance from standard. Because that does take into account those kids that are maybe, you know, these ki- these kids on this test get, on, put on the level one through four. Three and four, three is met, four is above, one and two are below. So we have a, a number of kids, we have a lot of work going on in our school district, and a lot of training and time invested, um, in all of our kids. So I prefer the DFS measure as well because a student out of one, that gets to a high two and grew a ton, they still don't show here.
Absolutely.
By the same token, a kid that was a low four and went to a high four or got a perfect score, he shows the same, he or she shows the same here. So, um, yeah, there's, there's a big difference.
Yeah, and I think, and just from my background, I, I understand those nuances. I just think it's really important to kind of remind everybody that that, that those nuances are there. And that looking at very simple data points that the state's giving us is not telling, not even a fraction of the story.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So when we look at our, our student groups, some of our student groups, these student groups happen to be, um, very similar to the dashboard student groups that we are, um, held accountable for on this California state dashboard. We can see most student groups in, in English Language Arts scored better than the state average. Um, not all. It's one thing that we're particularly proud of is our economically disadvantaged kids being significantly higher than the state average for, for that population. As well as one of our, our, well, our second biggest, um, race ethnicity in Chico Unified is Hispanic or Latino. And we s- we showed much better than the state in that. In this visual, Chico Unified is red and the state is orange, and this is la- last year's test only.
Did you choose these colors?
I did.
Just, that's what I'm gonna say.
You sound like Ed Services. Okay, ma- uh, math was more of a mixed bag. As I showed before, all, all students was above the state average. Our economically disadvantaged students were above the state average. A, a worry point, a concern for us here, really, when we talk about the importance of context, is our English, English learners, um, foster youth, homeless youth, and that reported disabilities, that's our, our special education, uh, population scored lower in the percentage of students met or above. When we look by grade level, um, every grade level, um, was above the state in English Language Arts. When we look at math, um, every grade level was above the state in, in math as well. Um, and I mentioned that these are, this is not cohort data, true cohort data. What I mean by that is these seventh graders here that took the eighth grade test in twenty-two, twenty-three last year, um, it's not the exact same group of students. However, it is somewhat similar of a group of students. So when we see jumps like this from seventh to eighth grade, um, that's pretty significant. And so that, that is, um, something that, um, we're proud of. And again, above the state average in every grade level. When we look at similar districts across the state, what I look for is, um, school districts that are unified school districts that are within plus or minus twenty-five percent of our enrollment. So that's about fifteen thousand kids to nine thousand kids. And plus or minus ten points, ten percentage points in the unduplicated count of their stu- student population. So the unduplicated count is your free and reduced lunch students, your foster and your English learner. And so those are the, uh, roughly economically disadvantaged, socioeconomically disadvantaged students, which we see as a, a huge factor in, in achievement. And so when we look out across the state, um, at, at those criteria, we, we were in a group of, of twelve unified school districts. Of those twelve, um, Chico Unified is third in from the left here. We have one district outscoring us, who also didn't change very much last year, um, Alhambra Unified. But out of those twelve, we're, we're, we're second. So we're, we're up there. Um, for me, and I think everybody in this room, we always wanna be top dog there, but, um, but not bad. For math, we see the same story. Um, we were second after Alhambra. Both went up a similar, similar amount in math. And the reason why I chose that unduplicated count, um, as a factor to look for similar districts is, when we look at our test scores and when we look out across the state, we can see that students that are not socio-economically disav- or not economically disadvantaged tend to fare far better on the state test than those that are economically disadvantaged. And this is one thing that we call the achievement gap. And really, we can see a stark difference between the light green that are not economically disadvantaged and the dark green that are economically disadvantaged. We see that across all race ethnicities, um, with a s- uh, significant gap. And really, that's what, um, you know, initiatives like, um, the Community Schools Grant, our targeted case managers, our, our focus on counseling. Those types of services are really, um, along with instructional practices and assessment. We're, that's, what we're trying to do here is get those, um, bubbles as close as we can and as high as we can. So we see that gap in English Language Arts. We see that gap in, in math. Any questions so far before I get into the sites? So for elementary language arts, we had seven of twelve of our elementary schools, um, increase their percentage of students, at met or above standard. Some of the more significant increases here are, uh, Marigold, uh, Shasta, Neil Dow. And I wanna also, um, congratulate Citrus and McManus for making growth. They are, you can see where they achieved in twenty-one, twenty-two, and all we ask is keep growing, keep growing, keep growing, and they did. And they have some, you know, a, a high needs population at those sites, and I think they did a, a wonderful job last year. So junior high language arts, um, we saw Chico Junior High with the biggest growth. We also saw, um, Bidwell creep up a little bit. And I don't know if you remember, but Bidwell grew a lot the previous time from their, from their last SBACK score. And it's really hard to keep those big jumps going. But, um, we did see some increase, and of course Marsh took, took a little bit of a dip there. With high school ELA, English Language Arts, we saw, saw both sides, both sites take a little bit of a dip. Um, again, still above the state average. Um, however, nobody, nobody likes to see any school go down. And this is absolutely not an excuse or anything like that. But the last test that, you know, obviously, English and math are, are gonna be the same. The last Smarter Balanced test they took was in seventh grade. And so it was a, a big, um, big, uh, air, big time period of, of no testing there. So not used to the system, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, neither group in DLC is, is happy about this. And actively trying to change it.
This is administered in which grade?
Eleventh, yeah.
So I'm curious, why are, uh, high school students in Chico more proficient? I mean, and, and in the state, it looks like, just high school students are faring better than students overall on this test. If I look at, back at the general scores, you don't have to click there, but they're just lower. English Language Arts, um, is hovering right around the fifty percent mark
Right.
uh, for English ELA, and then right around the forty percent mark or less for math. For everyone, whereas high school, you know, we're up in seventy percent of kids are proficient.
Right. We've, we've seen that, um, as long as I've been in this job, both in distance from standard and in percentage met or above at eleventh grade. I'm unsure why the, the students, you know, it's obviously the same system that the kids are going through. Um, and we s- we see it statewide. They just tend to score higher. An example, you know, counter to that might be sixth grade, uh, math, fifth and sixth grade math that we see low across the state as well, just like the, the high schools are generally higher in both English and math. But that's, you know, I account for the, the other change with, you know, uh, standards changes and things like that, but I'm unsure about eleventh grade.
So you would postulate that sixth grade, maybe, uh, is dragging, dragging the
Across the state, that's a, that's a hard year for, you know,
Okay.
for students in general, fifth and sixth, actually. All right, so Alternative Ed, um, ELA, um, we can, and I, I put Oakbridge in with Alternative Ed, even though it's not really Alternative Ed, um, just because it's, doesn't fit into any other group, and it's a nice, small group. So, um, you can see our Alternative Ed campuses. On the far left, Academy for Change, AFC, and, um, Center for Alternative Learning Cal. Really, those are really hard comparisons to make year to year. The, it's a very, very transient population. Both of those sites are in and out of there quite a bit. Very small numbers. Um, we saw Fairview and we saw, um, Oakbridge both decline. Our, our two biggest sites on this. So elementary math, in my eyes, is a, is a huge success last year. Nine of twelve sites increased math achievement. Um, and you can see, you know, it's hard to list off all the, all the growth here, you know, see Citrus, um, Hooker Oak, McManus again, Neil Dow, on and on, Parkview, Rosedale, um, Sierra View, et cetera. So, big changes last year in elementary math, and it showed on the, in the test scores.
Tim, you just, um, said that there were big changes in elementary math. What exactly was our change, changes?
I think a couple of things, Eileen. One of them, we got a pacing calendar, so every school is kinda operating on the same timeline with, uh, when they're teaching what units. Certainly some flexibility by individual teacher in there, but kinda by X point, you should be at this lo- this, this place in the curriculum, and we had assessments matched up to it at that point also. So we really dipped into FIEBs and IEBs, which if you think of like mini, uh, state practice tests, that's what we used also. So everybody was using that same kinda structure. Another big thing we did was those IEBs and FIEBs, we actually set up tutoring around that. So we put things in place, and I'm gonna give kudos to the people sitting in the back. Marisol Lopez was one who drove a lot of that in particular for us. They had tutoring lessons put together specifically, so if students struggled with X standard out of that FIB, they had curriculum put together, they had things ready to go for those kids with after-school program tutoring also, and during the school day. Like, our Title I groups would use it as well with those kinds of things. So really DLC was the one that kind of really crafted and pushed these changes through to make sure everybody was much more coherent, cohesive. We could look at things along the year and kinda know who was struggling and be able to put things in much, much more timely with it, with them.
Thank you.
When we get to junior high math, we can see Chico Junior again. Chico Junior had a great year all the way around, with excellent growth in, in math. Bidwell and Marsh took a similar, um, saw a similar decrease. High school math looks very, very similar to high school English with a little, uh, drop for each site. And finally, for our Smarter Balance scores, um, we have Al- Alternative Ed and Oakbridge here. And we can see Fairview, um, being our, our, our two biggest sites here, Oakbridge and Fairview. We saw Fairview going up and, and Oakbridge, um, taking a bit of a decrease.
Good. Excuse me. On the, the slide you just left, Fairview and Cal, on the left, percentage of students that were, that met the standard and above. That's not a very good presentation of how many of them were meeting standards. Or am I misreading what?
It, it started with zero the previous year and went up to, I think it was 2.2%.
Concerning.
Are, are all, are all ed schools, including Oakbridge, are they getting the same formative assessments as our gen ed school sites?
I'm actually unsure of elementary. I know, yeah, at Oakbridge, they're giving the same assessments. At Alternative Ed, they're giving, they're big on, using iXL as well. There we go. Okay. Now on to our locally aggregated data from the California Science Test. This data is going to be a different flavor. Mentioned this earlier. This is, this data is shown in distance from standard. So the average student in the groups that we're going to show you, how close were they to meeting standard? So ideally, every student would be, you know, plus 100 above standard. If a student, if a group of students averaged below standard, it's, we obviously have some work to do. So then, just to give you a little overview on, on how this is calculated, the, the red square there is circling the lowest scale score a student can get in the given grade levels there and, and meet standard. So students are given a scale score, and then that scale score, you know, puts them into the categories that we were just looking at for Smarter Balance and, and English Language Arts. But that scale score may also be used to calculate distance from standard. This is the measure that the California State Dashboard uses, and this is the measure that allows us to essentially get credit, for lack of a better term, in our test scores for pushing a kid who's well above standard even higher and pushing a student who's well below standard higher. But maybe they didn't quite meet standard that year, but they're moving in the right direction, and they're moving significantly. So what we want to, oops. What we want to see on these charts is we want the bubbles to be as high as possible. Okay? And we want the, the blue dot, the 2023 data, to be above the green dot, which is the 2022 data, so that we're moving our kids up. Either closer to, if it's below standard, we're moving closer to standard, or if they're above, the same thing. We want, we want those dots higher. So you can see on this chart, the average student was a little less than nine points below standard on the CAS this year, up a little bit more than one, average of one point from the previous year. When we look at our district student groups, we can see our, generally, most of, most of our student groups increased. We can see particularly our second largest race, race ethnicity group, Hispanic, shown here, with significant growth. We see growth in students with disabilities. We see growth here in socio-economic disadvantaged homeless youth. And there's no foster data here because they're, it's too small of a data point. Too small of a number of students, I'm sorry. When we look out across the grade levels, we can see a very significant increase in grade 11. And really, when we, when we talk about an increased district-wide, it was grade 11 that carried us. We, we went down in, in fifth and eighth grade. But that 11th grade increase is encouraging, that we're moving in the right direction. Just, just as a point of explanation, the 12th grade there, those are kids, like Chico Unified, we give our CAS test in 11th grade. If the kids don't take it in 11th grade, they have to take it in 12th. So that little blue dot at the bottom is representative of a, of a normal year. You know, 48 kids here didn't take it the year prior, so they had to take it in, in 12th grade. We see the same gap between economic statuses. We can see students that were not socio-economically disadvantaged growing at a far higher rate and scored much higher than those that are socio-economically disadvantaged. We saw half of our elementary sites increase on the CAS test. You can see Parkview up here. And we can see Sierra View over on the far right as the two highest. But we did see good growth at McManus, at Emma Wilson. I think that's Shasta there, and Shasta as well. Two of our three junior highs increased, one fairly significantly. Marsh went down pretty significantly. Both comprehensive high schools increased PV at, increased at a very high rate, I would say. I would say both, you know, our 11th grade scores are trending in the right direction. We can see Fairview showing a very slight increase here while the other alt-ed schools and Oakbridge went down. Any questions? Clarifications? Okay.
I mean, you're not done. I have a couple of questions jotted down, just from when you were presenting. When do we, is there a typical time in high school that the science classes are taken? Is it generally ninth and 10th grade that science is taken? And then they don't take the CAS until 11th grade?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh, it just got quiet.
I am Sarah Pascias, one of the Assistant Principals at Chico High. Kind of to answer your question about the science progression, most students take three years of science. It's not a requirement. But two years is the, is the requirement. However, for college prep students, most universities require three years and they encourage a fourth year. So students in the freshman year traditionally take a biology class in the sophomore year. Now with the new NGSS, traditionally take chemistry or physics. And then in the junior year will take physics or chemi, will flop, will flop that depending on their interest. And then, or they would take an AP physics or an AP chemistry or something along those lines. So to answer your question, I think you're asking, are they taking all of their science and then being tested in their junior year when they're not in a science class? That does happen with a percentage of our students if they are two years and done. I would, you're asking me to pull a specific data point out of my head that I don't have. But I think we have more than 50% of our juniors taking a science class. And the CAS is a, it's a, it's a much, oh, what's integrated, that's the word I'm looking for. It's a much more integrated test, so it does take all of those concepts over time and embed them there.
It tests, it tests biology, chemistry, physics, and environmental, and earth environmental sciences.
Correct.
So at the minimum, students need to take biology, which integrates a little bit of the earth and environmental stuff. And then either chemistry or physics, which also integrates a little bit of the relevant earth and environmental science.
Correct.
But then conceptually could not take a third year, but still have to test at the end of the third year.
Yes.
And have missed a quarter of the content.
Right, well.
A quarter or more, a quarter to a third of the content.
Of the expectations of the test.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Does that answer everything?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that for the audience.
Okay, thank you.
I also, let's see, my notes are all over the place, I'm sorry. That's a later question. I was wondering, since we have our DLC folks here, we don't really hear very often from our DLC folks. And I was wondering if we could put them on the spot in a very low-risk environment and just see if y'all can introduce yourself and what you, what, what your DLC topic is? Is that too much to ask?
Come on up.
I mean, we have until 6:45 for this workshop, technically, although all of us would like to go home, I'm sure, sooner. But just, you know, I'd, I'd love, I'd love for your faces to be brought to the forefront on, you know, who's helping drive these leadership conversations at the content area level. Thank you.
Yes. My name is Melanie Perrin. I'm a sixth grade math teacher at Chico Junior, and I represent all of the junior high math departments.
Hi, my name is Camille Upton. I am a high school math teacher and DLC member from Chico High.
I'm Monica Egbert. I teach at Pleasant Valley High School, and I represent the DLC math from our high school.
Hi, I'm Hollis Nsero, and I teach seventh and eighth grade English at Bidwell. And I am one of the two English DLC reps for the junior high English teachers.
Hello, my name is Lloyd Hightower. I teach at Pleasant Valley High School, Special Education, and I represent all secondary teachers, special ed teachers at DLC.
Hi, I'm Jess Crane. I teach at Neil Dow. I'm our Title I Coordinator, MTSS Lead DLC Representative. I also help with kindergarten prep academy and summer school reading intervention.
Hello, my name is Marissa Lopez. I am the DLC rep for Rosedale. I am also the Assistant Principal and the Title I Coordinator there. And at DLC, we do many, many things. I actually have a list of things that we go over. We are currently, we meet every two weeks, and we talk about our assessments, we talk about the data. We, as reps, go back to our sites and ask our teachers feedback. And then we come back as the reps for our site and report. We discuss the data, what we could do to better improve the students' success. And there's many topics that we go over right now. One of the main focuses is Stacy Bain. We have been getting PDs where we're getting trained on the science of reading. Rosedale just recently had Hilma Khan, who he's trained our teachers on the science of reading in Spanish. We have a PD coming up in December for third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers. And then together, we just discuss what we could do to better support all of our students.
Rhonda Odlum, the Principal of Oakbridge. I'm the elementary and secondary DLC rep.
And Sarah also, Sarah Pascias also comes to DLC as well. You already met her. As well as a wide variety of secondary Assistant Principals and I, and elementary Assistant Principals for the most part. It's a group of true leaders on their sites. And, you know, in the case of our secondary DLC, across sites. Hollis and Melanie, in particular, at the junior high sites have, do a wonderful job working with the sites that they don't, they don't work at, you know. So they're really bringing the junior highs together. And it's a, it's a very honest group. Nobody's there to tell us what we, they think we want to hear. They're there to tell us the, the real deal. I got called out a couple hours ago by Camille for something, and which I'm sorry again, Camille. And it's a wonderful group, and they go way above and beyond their point two that they're given for, for participation in DLC.
I know not all DLC members are here tonight, but as I was kind of tallying up, we had, we have one math DLC member from each high school, is that right?
Correct.
And then one math junior high DLC representative in total? Okay. And then I, I jotted down that there are two junior high-level English DLC members.
Correct.
How many high school math, is there one, or sorry, English from, is there one English from each high school?
Correct. And then we have
But we're missing one junior high, if we were going to have representative from each.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm like, not seeing the
We also have Alternative Ed representation.
And then at the elementary school level, is it at least one person from each site?
Right.
And there's content area specialists for elementary also?
No, they're, they're there to represent their entire staff, yeah.
And then SPED is in there.
Right. And we have special education at the secondary level. Lloyd Hightower introduced himself.
Yes, I read that.
And really, like, you know, their subject area folks focusing on, in the world of assessment, their subject area assessments, but really they're the reps for their entire site.
And so why aren't there more DLC math reps at the junior high level?
Comes down to money.
Yeah, we give each, just like elementary gets one point, a point two, each junior high gets a point two DLC member from each school site. For the two English, just what they have at the Marsh and Bidwell, that, those are the two teachers, when we ask them to have an English or a math, those two schools have English, and then we always make sure that we have one math, and that is Melanie. She's the queen of math for junior high.
Okay, I see, I see now. There's one DLC rep from each junior high school, either English or math. And then how does science fit in all this?
Science currently does not.
There's no DLC for science right now.
True.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, next tricky question.
All right.
So I think that my, like, the big idea question that I don't expect to have an answer, this is another philosophical question, is knowing that formative assessments, while important, also take away some classroom time, some teaching time. And I know that there is a variety of perspectives on that, and individual teachers have certain feelings one way or another. Have, are we working towards, or have we struck that balance of having meaningful formative assessments? Clearly, our state testing assessment data is, is not really a driving factor in what programs we have and what is happening at the classroom level. But simultaneously mitigating that loss of, of instructional time, you know, having inform your instructional time. It just, we talked about this last year, and I don't know that we ever, there was like really any, I don't know, follow-up, but there still are those complaints coming from classroom teachers about too much assessment time in the classroom being spent on iXL, for example, or any of the other various programs that are being used.
Right. There's always going to be a push and pull with that. There's, there's a need for standardized common assessments across the district for a variety of reasons. Collaboration, progress monitoring, assigning students in need to interventions, tier-two interventions that would be. And there's a need. And I think DLC does a, does a good job of, the best possible job, because having been in this business for a lot of years, like, there's, there's always going to be a push and pull there on that, on that question. And there's a need, and I think DLC does a, does a good job of, the best possible job, because having been in this business for a lot of years, like, there's, there's always going to be a push and pull there on that, on that question that you asked. What, I will, kind of, any DLC member can come up here, but I think what they're, what they're striving for is, is meaning, meaningful assessments. And I'll use iXL for an example, if students are given this assessment, that teacher gets a lot of help with remediation. That may save class time on, on remediation. Those kinds of things are taken into account when assessments are selected.
The elementary version of what Tim's talking about, there's a perpetual revision of assessments every year, it's always kind of an ongoing topic for us. So the reps, like you heard Marisol talk, they go back and forth. Some changes this year is an example, like, we used to give a BASS reading assessment, that has become optional, just based on the feedback, back and forth, and one-on-one nature and time element with those kinds of things. Teachers felt they got enough other information to kind of drive instruction without that one. So DLC, and I kind of laughed, because we talk about things like that for six months in there before we pull the trigger of going yes or no with it. So at the end of the year, they were like, we don't need the BASS, we feel like we've got enough other, other assessment information, but if your site wants to do it, or you want to do it, you are welcome to also. So individual sites do some things a little bit different. We're also already talking about the FIBs and IABs for math, we're talking about what we want to do for next year with them, there's some feedback that we have them in the wrong order and those kinds of things. So it's just, it's a perpetual, ongoing, every year discussion and modification for elementary. And occasionally, they actually want to put more on there, and I have to say, Ted Sullivan is not going to advocate to put more assessments in there right now.
All right, so, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to, the, the next question philosophically that I'm working towards is, how much our formative assessments are matching up with what we're seeing on those state assess, those state tests, the summative assessments? I mean, is it a pretty, are they, tend to be a pretty good predictive tool to see how that plays out, or are, you know, are, our, yeah, I don't know, I guess that's basically the question.
I, I would say that when you, like, when you buy an assessment program, every vendor is going to tell you that our test can tell you exactly how your kids are going to do on a state test. I, I tend to not believe that. We've had iXL now, for example, for a year. I think it's too early in an implementation, just because teacher comfort with the, with the platform in, in the first year is, it's a hurdle, you know, it's, it's growing pains. But we will continue to monitor that. I know, you know, going back to the elementary math piece, and, and that site that we were used as a model was watching their iReady math scores. And it was a great indicator of what, of how their students were going to do on the state test, and we really saw that play out. They knew, typically, when you, when you talk to a site that grew a lot, they know they were going to grow a lot before they go into testing, they know.
Is it, this is, this is going to sound not great, but is it kind of safe to say, in a weird sense, that the state testing scores, that's on the dashboard, it's really what the public is talking about, that's our public perception? But it, to me personally, as a classroom teacher, with my classroom teacher hat on, granted, I've been removed from the classroom for a few years now, because y'all voted me here. Is it safe to say that those, that's, it's almost unfair, the public perception is based on state testing, and really, that's not a good, I don't, it doesn't seem to be a very good indicator, especially now, when you can't disaggregate the data properly and see growth specifically, you know? On that same level as, like, you, you can kind of break down more in the cast scores, yet the public is judging our schools based on that data. And, and then, you know, our formative assessments, I think, tell a more specific story, right? But that's not really necessarily public data.
Right, I, you know, my, my.
Your opinion's safe.
My, good. I, I think as, you know, the, the California public should have a, a, a report on how their schools are serving their kids in a standardized way.
And so do you think that this is a fair snapshot of how our schools are serving our kids?
I think yes, but I also think the California State Dashboard, academic measures are a much more fair representation of growth in any school or district.
Great, thank you for saying that. I'm sorry, I've capitalized on everything.
I just had a question regarding the smarter balance, real quick. How often does smarter balance create a new test? Is it yearly, or, I mean, I'm just wondering if that's a factor?
They'll rotate items through yearly, it's not a whole new test every year, but they will rotate items in and out. And so it changes, changes it a little bit from year to year, that's part of the reason why it's important to watch the state trends, to see, you know, is everybody, is happening to everybody or not, you know? See if you're an anomaly or you're right with the trend.
And I wanted to add to that question you asked earlier, so we currently, elementary has been using the FIBs and the IABs as an assessment to track, to see if the kids are mastering the standards or not. And once we get that data, we, we analyze that data, we check to see which students are below standard, approaching standard, and at standard. And all the sites have been doing tutoring, so after, after school, students are asked to stay for thirty minutes, where there's curriculum that is built on these, that was built based on these interims. And so we're able to ensure that the students are meeting the standards. And the data from these formative assessments do tell us a lot of information, and that way we're able to meet the needs of those students. We've also started creating front-loading materials based on the standards that they're supposed to be learning, where the teachers are able to teach the kids the standards before practice them, they take this assessment. That makes the far-below group a bit smaller, now we're only meeting the needs of the kids that really, really are still struggling with that standard after doing the front-loading materials and being taught the standards using iReady. So we do track this data, each site has a coordinator, and there's tutoring happening after school. I actually was just creating a to-do list, I've been sending emails to the admin and teachers at Rosedale to remind them that the interim is coming up, here's some front-loading material that you could use. And I've seen that it helps, it helps a lot with the front-loading. And now, that ensures that we only meet, that we meet with the kids that really, truly are having a hard time comprehending the standard and mastering it.
Any further questions? Okay, I wanted to thank board members Lando and Robinson for meeting with me as the board liaisons for this presentation. The cast results that I presented are presented, in my opinion, much less friendly form. On the website linked in the, in the agenda here, or on the last page of the slides here. They're, they're available, again, more updates in, in December when the California State Dashboard comes out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excuse me. So this was an informational item, I don't think we have any additional public comment for the workshop topic this evening. And so, seeing no additional questions from the board, we can move on to item five. It's our discussion action calendar, under Ed Services, we have a discussion action item on homework. This is titled "The Implications of a No Homework Policy," presented by Mr. Marshott.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up, Pedro and Ted, you guys need to clicker?
So, good evening, this is a topic that's kind of been floating around there forever, everybody's favorite topic is homework. So with that being said, it's really hard to actually define homework, it sounds kind of funny, but if you ask ten different people, what is homework, you'll get ten different answers from very likely. Is it work left over from class, is it work that's assigned to kind of check at home with those kinds of things? Is it an extension of the school day, so there's just a lot of different definitions, which makes it a little bit difficult to talk real specifically about some of those things. But with that being said, this is currently what we have as far as our policy with homework. Pedro can talk for secondary, but in elementary, generally, it's supposed to be something that's kind of an extension of what they've been working on in class. And our general rule of thumb is it's about ten minutes per grade level maximum for homework for a night. So if it's a third grader, they should be maxing out at about thirty minutes of homework at night, and it's kind of a reasonable chunk, able to do those kinds of things, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the things we look at is, we survey parents every year, we kind of ask them what they think about homework for their children. So about seventy-plus percent of our parents think that they're getting a reasonable, fair, appropriate amount of homework, and we ask them. This is kind of every year, one of the questions we ask as far as feedback from them.
Do you have that divided out among levels, like elementary, middle school, and high school?
This is just kind of the general survey question we send out, so it's different.
Could have been useful information.
So some of the considerations, if we were to take a deeper dive with this, actually are, actually, like I said, what is the definition of homework? You, yeah, like I said, you ask ten people, you're going to get ten different answers as far as what is homework specifically with those things. If we're, if you're looking to take further action on this, you would definitely want to be involving much more feedback from parents and guardians about what they think about homework and what's appropriate, what's not with those kinds of things. We want to be surveying teachers, because there's huge differences between an elementary third-grade teacher versus an AP English teacher at a high school level, as far as what would be reasonable, appropriate for homework as well. Consider higher, higher-level course requirements, such as advanced placement, et cetera, et cetera, they're going to have different loads of homework, needless to say, with the expectations goes, goes with those courses. Academic achievement implications, does it really affect how kids do on the state testing, having homework or not having it? We talk about 504 IP accommodations, how would that reflect with homework expectations, changing it, and analyzing legal contractual obligations. I'm not sure how that weaves into some of the grading policies and some of those kinds of things also. So that would be a lot of time kind of going through it, if that, that's the, it's just a much deeper dive to look into those levels. The elementary school, kind of got feedback from principals via their teachers with it, as far as kind of the, some of the things that they think are advantages of having a no homework policy. Some of, one of the first one is really students, the amount of, significant amounts of support they need to get homework done. Every kid's really different with what's needed, so there's huge variations as far as what's happening at home for those ones. One of them, families appreciate less stress and more family time. I know LCC has kind of moved towards a, I'm going to call it a very minimal homework policy, I think that was one of the factors, and I know Mrs. Schrock is here someplace too, I don't know if she wants to talk about it more, but you can ask her questions. But LCC is one that has moved towards, I'm going to call it, not a no homework, but a minimal homework kind of process at their school. Ability levels are different, might take one student, just the different amounts of time involved for doing a one homework assignment, it really varies. Sometimes I get calls, parents frustrated that students doing three hours of homework a night, and we say, that's way too much, that shouldn't be happening with those kinds of things. Inequities have hurt how teachers grade homework, definitely see those kinds of things also as far as expectations from different teachers with it. Some of the elementary school disadvantages, like why we think it's important to have homework policies in place. It allows practice of additional topics covered in class, which is an extension of what they're doing in class, they get additional practice with it. There's a benefit to requiring certain amount of homework and seeing the amount of students move up a grade level as it prepares students. So if they don't ever do homework, it's harder and harder to kind of catch up, it's just that pattern of getting work done and accomplished with those kinds of things. A lot of classes and teachers use planners also, it kind of, it helps as an organizational tool for them, as they get ready to move up in the levels with those things. Parents also get a little bit of information about what's going on in their classroom, what kids are focusing on, and kind of checking on their children to see how they're doing with comprehension with it as well. So I'll let Pedro talk a little bit more about secondary implications of it from there.
Thank you. The advantages of a no homework policy, and I should start off with, we surveyed our DLC reps, and they provided tons of information. And I also want to say, a lot of the information that they did provide, it did not all go in there, because there was a lot of it there. So just want to make sure, we do have our DLC reps here tonight, so if there are further questions later on, may, please make sure that they're here to answer some of those questions. Okay, students would not need to take home anything, okay? And please consider the homework definition there when we read that statement, right? Because every single teacher had a different way of looking at it when we say no homework policy. Students have more free time to spend with family, friends, and extracurricular activities, kind of same thing you saw with elementary. Grade base more on student knowledge slash assessments. Next one, less opportunities for cheating, that's something that, oh, all right. Students feel more pressured to know content material. For teachers, it means less grading, and the next one, maybe more equitable. Some of the disadvantages for middle schools of a no homework policy.
Hold on, Pedro.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in with the equity statement. In, in some of the, the research that I've read, and in talking with what LCC is, is doing and some of their stuff. If a student doesn't have the support for homework and stuff after school, and another student has, you know, wonderful support, and does the twenty minutes of reading, and does the discussion. Doesn't that lend itself to increasing those gaps that we're trying to deal with?
In that scenario that you are giving, the answer is yes. I could also give another scenario where, for example, you have students that need remediation to fill in certain gaps. And those gaps could be filled, for example, using iXL, then not giving them those opportunity means that maybe it's inequitable there. So it just depends on how we define it and how we use it.
Do we have an opportunity for all of our students to have that after-school half-hour, forty-five minutes in order to get assistance with homework? And, you know, what's being directed by the teacher as far as this is what you need to work on kind of thing? Or are, is that not available for all of our kids?
Not the way that you have specifically defined it across the board. We do have teachers across the board that I'm sure are, if our students ask, hey, can you please help me? I'm pretty sure, again, ninety-plus percent of our teachers are going to stay after school. Middle school, you have the after-school program, but that only serves approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty students. And that's sixth through eighth, and it's broken up, so if you have like fifty-eighth graders, fifty-seventh graders, and fifty-sixth graders. So, and then at the high school, there is no such program.
Just the, the elementary answer, I, excuse me, the elementary answer is, all of our schools have a BLAST, or all will have a BLAST program next year with it. So part of that component is, is a homework or schoolwork component for, but as Pedro said, we can't serve every kid, there's not space in it, so it caps at about eighty-eight-ish, I think, something in that range. So out of the school, we've got eighty-five, ninety spaces in there for students.
Not, not only can not all of the students attend BLAST, but not all students can attend BLAST because they have other family obligations that they have to attend to, which usually is our kids who are, tend, tend towards economically disadvantaged, because they have parents who are working multiple jobs and things like that. So we're, we're, it's, it's that, your previous slide that, that we were referencing, she was referencing, where it says, may not be equitable, is, is not a may, we know that it's not equitable.
I do want to mention, though, at the high schools, now that we have the block schedule, they have academic success classes, so students that are identified that need more assistance can be taken in academic success class, or, so that is, we're hoping, over time, as we get, I would say, more, the ability to understand what we can do in those classrooms to give the kids the sports needs that will continue to improve. I know that they made a huge leap from the first year that we have had block scheduling to now, to get that support needed for those students. So when we say we don't have something after school, you are correct, but we do have built-in things at the school day.
Okay. Is another way to put this equity question, that basically, to your saying, and this is directed to both of you, I guess, Madam President and Ms. Robinson. Homework helps students that have a good home structure for doing homework. Therefore, it's inequitable, because some students don't have that. And so you might consider removing homework, because it helps these students who have a good homework structure at home. Is that another way to characterize it?
I think that the difference would be. I think that the difference would be that expecting learning to take place at home through homework is a differentiation here. Additional practice could be beneficial for anybody who have, who has the time to do it. So if, if a teacher is saying, you can practice these additional math problems at home, but if you have just been in class, you should still be able to be successful. But there are also instances where students may be assigned homework that is an extension of learning that they're not, they don't have the opportunity to learn that in class, but they're still being held accountable for that learning to be taken, taking place at home. So that goes back to the definition of what, what is homework that we're saying is being assigned.
There you go.
Yeah.
And I, I would say, you know, elementary is really pushed hard for kind of what you shared as option one. This is something they've been working on in class, it's an extension, the time for a teacher to check and see if they understood it outside the class also. Additional new learning is something that we really say shouldn't be happening and being expected to be done at home, just for that reason.
And thank you for that clarification because that's how difficult it is to be able to define homework amongst our educators. Middle school disadvantages of a no homework policy. For certain classes, students may need more time to complete a writing assignment because they are thinking, revising, editing, et cetera, or need to read independently. Students also miss an opportunity to practice. They miss time to spend outside the class period to think about material. Homework is another opportunity for teacher feedback on student work. And then students work on iXL and fill in their learning gaps.
Could you clarify that last one for me? So are we saying that iXL is, could be used as homework?
That is correct.
Just making sure, thank you.
Middle school disadvantages of a no homework policy. And once again, this comes from our, directly from our teachers. We already use a lot of class time for grade-level English classes to read novels and other required reading. But sometimes students need to read on their own. A novel unit may take eight weeks instead of four. Next one, studying for tests may also benefit from additional time outside of class. Honor students are expected to read at their own pace, on their own, and this could eliminate their independence. I don't think a one-size-fits-all policy would work for all subjects. I could also see a lot of backlash where students would tell teachers they weren't allowed to have them do anything outside of their classroom. And then possibly a no homework on weekends policy for middle school would work? Ready to move on to the next slide? Okay. High school advantages of a no homework policy. No homework means less stress and anxiety. I believe it should be called a no graded homework policy. Less grading for teachers equals better lessons for students. Upgraded, sorry, ungraded, check for understanding assignments are still an option to gauge student understanding of standards-based assignments. I ask my students what the pros to a no homework policy would look like. More sleep, job experience, more time for training and athletic events, more time for research projects. That's kind of an interesting one, right? Because it's, isn't research projects kind of like a homework? And community service, more time for extracurricular and cultural activities, more time for family and friends. Disadvantages for high school. Grades would be based on exams only. Students would not learn time management skills. This policy would not prepare college-bound students for the rigor of college studies. Students learn to use outside resources, ask for help, and check for understanding by doing work outside of a class. Students miss an opportunity to practice. They miss time to spend outside the class period to think about the material. Teachers are not able to give feedback and students don't get to receive feedback. And last there, students would never be able to read the eight to 10 novels we read per year. They would not be able to write the eight to 10 essays we have them produce per year. Class time would have to be dedicated to these activities, and that would eat up already sparse instructional time, especially with the block schedule. Time for discussion and questions.
You go ahead.
In, in reading, you know, some things over time, because this has been an interest for me because, well, it's been an, an interest. And now we're getting to the point where there's research from other districts and other states that have gone to these no homework policies and taking a look at what's the impact on the level of understanding and learning and stuff, you know? Long-term, what is it doing with the kids? And the advantages seem to be on the plus side. And so, you know, if we have sources that are reliable, and, and again, I don't trust other people's interpretation of whether or not something's working or isn't. So if, if stuff comes through the system that you think is credible, that we should, you know, take a look, continue to throw that in our laps, please.
I think one thing Pedro did as we were looking into this a little bit was looked statewide for a policy about this, and it didn't exist. Like no other district has something like that in place currently.
I do want to say that-
Like a no homework policy? No other district?
No. I do want to say there are schools with no, a no homework policy. And there's also a lot of definition out there, sorry, I should rephrase that. There are, there are schools out there that defined what a limited homework policy was. There is that. But a no homework policy, there was nothing, and there was nothing that was district-wide.
And we haven't been able to find, like what Pedro did, like they'll have an AR regulation on types of things of homework. Again, what they talked about, one, I believe this one district was not allowing homework to be provided on a Friday so the families could have the weekends for their families, so you couldn't do those types of things. There's different rules, I mean, in different school sites up and down the state have different things that they do for, for homework or not homework. But I, I believe that the, the actual board policy, we have not been able to find any.
With board permission, if Mrs. Shrock wants to come up and give kind of a minute overview of kind of LCC and what they went through and how they've landed and what they're actually doing. Just more information for you guys.
Hi, good evening. So I did get a chance to meet with Ms. Robinson, I think it was last spring, correct? And so Little Chico Creek's minimal homework policy kind of came from our instructional leadership team gathering, and we really saw a change in our demographic. Right as I got to that school about 10 years ago, and so it's been about seven years that we decided to institute a minimal homework policy, as Mr. Sullivan said. And so we just have this policy on all of our staff meeting agendas, and it reads like this. In recognition that demands on students and staff and families have increased during after-school hours, LCC has adopted the following homework guidelines. Homework at LCC will primarily focus on reading and spelling skills and math practice activities. So reading activities can include reading independently, reading to someone, reading with someone, listening to an adult read, or online reading activities. And then math activities can include practicing basic math facts. Practice may be accomplished with flashcards, dice, or card games, or online math activities. So occasionally, students may need to complete unfinished classwork or be assigned unfinished projects at home. It's our intent to provide homework that is meaningful for students' academics, as well as honor the after-school time with families. We don't hold students accountable for turning in any of those practice assignments after, and the next morning. We don't hold them at recess in case they didn't get it done. That was all kind of let go once we talked with our instructional leadership team, our teachers, and our families. Do you have any questions?
How long ago, how long ago did that start?
I want to say about seven years ago.
What, if any, significant changes did you observe in the students or, or family interactions or the culture of the school?
The culture of the, I think the culture of the school improved just because we didn't have what we had called working recess, where, oops, you didn't do your math homework last night, you didn't get checked off, so you're going to go to this classroom for half of your recess time to finish up. The same kids were in working recess all the time, and it didn't help them get any help. So we did institute a homework tutoring group. We now have BLAST, it has a very strong homework component, and that has been helpful too. And, you know, there are a couple of teachers, especially in the upper grades, that really wanted to hold on to that homework piece and how do we hold them accountable for it? And it's, it's something that we deal with all the time. We haven't come up with a great answer about that. But being an avid school, we really do want our students to become organized, so we really focus on those daily planners and reading and getting the parents involved in signing the daily planners, but we don't hold them accountable for any kind of turned-in homework. The other thing that I did find when I first got to Little Chico Creek is that the math homework that they were assigning, it wasn't getting reviewed or graded. And so if a student had done it incorrectly, that didn't get caught, and then they had ingrained that in them. And so they didn't want to take the time the next day to grade or go over the homework. I didn't want them assigning it. So that's kind of how this started. Thank you.
You know, with 12 elementary schools, I would say each one has a slightly different culture as far as expectation from families, et cetera, et cetera with it also. And Mrs. Shrock kind of worked with the group there, worked with families to kind of put something like that in place. And I would say if you look at some of our other schools, it would, it would not go over as well. And once again, each school's got a little different culture as far as expectation, parent connection, and all those kinds of things too.
How many, I mean, I know we go by instructional minutes, but about how many hours are students doing schoolwork when they're at school at the elementary level?
Like, there's 300 instructional minutes for fourth and fifth grade.
Can you do the math for me? Hours?
How much time of that, are they actually engaged in doing class?
How many hours are they doing schoolwork during school? Like five hours?
I would say, oh, I'm sorry, 300 minutes is like five hours.
So more than part-time? Like a part-time equivalent of an adult?
Yep.
Okay. And then, so and you had mentioned at the beginning, like, a rule of thumb that you, you prefer to see is 10 minutes per grade level. So a fifth grader would be getting about, could have about 50 minutes on average of, of schoolwork. But that's average, right? So not all students are going to complete that work in 50 minutes, some will do it in 10, and some will do it in two hours. So then if that student is a two-hours student, they've just now had seven hours of work, almost a full-time job equivalent, and that is going to be eating in on family time and all the positive things that, that we were talking about here. It's, it's just, it's a really interesting topic to think about holistically like that.
Yeah, and I would say it's not like Ted Sullivan, elementary director preference, such is kind of what has been in place and kind of the standard expectations about that.
Semi-status quo, we can call it, that's fine. And then if we were to continue that to the middle school level, sixth graders, 60 minutes, seventh graders, 70 minutes, eighth graders, 80 minutes, ninth graders, an hour and a half at the ninth grade level, and now they're doing six hours at school. So we're really getting up there. And, and I mean, I know from teaching middle school science that my, my students were experiencing, you know, anywhere from three, 30 minutes to an hour per topic, you know, per core topic of homework every night. That's an insane amount of homework. I mean, there are teachers who are parents in our district right now who are begging for less homework for their kids because there's no meaningful quality time with their kids during the week. And then, and the fights ensue, and, you know, then the home life is degraded, and it's just, it's a, it's a cascade effect that we do have the ability to think about how we might bring some solutions to the table, I guess. You know, obviously not a blanket one-size-fits-all, but I think that there's room here to, to contemplate that, especially with our DLC folks being so in tuned to the school sites and, and staff and the student populations and the culture and all those things.
Homework is a topic for this Friday Elementary DLC.
How exciting.
I have a question. On the slide, middle school advantages of a no homework policy, specifically the point, students feel more pressured to know content material. I'm kind of unclear as to what this means. Middle school advantages of a no homework policy. So if there's no homework in place, one of the awesome things about it is they feel more pressure to know more content material.
So let, let me give you an example, and I'm going to try to answer like the teacher that possibly did this. So if I'm an educator, I may assign homework, and I may only give them maybe a two or, two to five minutes. My whole intent would be to make sure that something goes into long-term memory for this student, right? So therefore, I want this to, just, I want it long-term memory. I want this student to remember this concept or this standard five months from now, right? So what I would do as an educator, I say, okay, you know what? I just want you to learn this, maybe do a exit ticket or an entry ticket, and you're going to turn this into me. Let's make it an entry ticket because it's more of a, a homework, right? So they come in, they write down the concept, and that's it. Maybe it takes anywhere from two to five minutes. But I do this routinely, let's say, I don't know, once a week for over a course of three months, right? And my belief is that over a course of three months, because of repetition and speaking about it in class, that it has now been ingrained in the long-term memory. Without using the purpose, and therefore we have to define the purpose of what homework is, but under that scenario, that could possibly lead to me, as an educator, not making sure that the student learned that concept and ingrained it in long-term memory. That would be an example. I hope that answered your question.
So the advantage is that the teacher feels more pressured to use the class time more effectively because there's no homework? I, I'm not drawing the-
Well, no, the, the problem is that within, say, it's going to be something that you're not going to cover, like every day. You might not be able to cover that because as an educator, you have this whole curriculum, and there's a pacing guide. So your subject within, or, or the themes or units within that subject area changes weekly, monthly, and you're not going back over it. You don't have time to go back over it on a big, large scale. So you want to make sure that the students keep that in their mind and that it's fresh, and you do it sometimes using homework. Does that answer your question?
Maybe I just don't agree with that concept, I guess.
So this was listed under advantages, not disadvantages. And I was wondering, maybe it's kind of a restating, I read it as a restating of grades being based more on student knowledge assessment. Like if students know that there's no homework to plump up their grade, their only chance to, to do well in class is to actually know the material and be able to show that in class. And again, I don't know who this teacher wrote-
No, you could look at it that way as well. And you're specific, in that point of view, you're kind of looking at it like grade-wise, right? Like, let's say that homework is 10% of a grade. In this case, 10% of that homework now is gone, now you're basing it more on the assessment. If, that's another way to look at it.
You know, I always-
It's kind of the same concept of grade base more on student knowledge and no homework base.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I always, I went to school here, Chico Unified, and I always strongly felt like the teacher in the homework they assigned was intended to prepare me for the test. I never had any other impression of it, you know? Whether they were grading 5% on homework, 10% on homework, 40% on homework, I have no idea, I never had any idea. It just really seemed like, if you want to be ready for the test, you better do your homework because otherwise you're not going to internalize the exercises. So, yeah, I don't see the logic of laying down a blanket no homework policy for Chico Unified. I mean, it seems just like you're taking that tool out of, it seems like if a teacher's goal is to educate children, this is one way that on some level, this is a way to prepare them for the challenges that are going to face them in the class as they go to try to take a test. So I guess I agree with Ms. Conken. It's an advantage that a student feels more pressure to know the content material. I guess if we could sort of dramatize this, you've got a student who's like, wow, I got this big test coming up, and I know I really want to do a really good job, so I guess I better pay really, really, really close attention in class. And then I'm going to maybe talk to the teacher and go over what's going to be on this test, and they're going to tell me in class. And then I'm going to go home on my own volition, and if I really want to do well on the test, I'm going to, you know, take a lot of initiative and make myself flashcards, and, and I'm going to, you know, imagine what it'll be like to get these questions. You know, that just doesn't sound like something that most junior high kids, middle schoolers are- You know, that just doesn't sound like something that most junior high kids, middle schoolers are going to, going to do. But when you give them a homework assignment or a worksheet, when you say do this, you know, then they're like at home and they're like, you know, this doesn't make any sense to me. You know, and some kids can say, mom, can you help me understand this? Or maybe the parent's just doing it with them every day. And I understand there are some kids that don't have that person to call on to help them through that worksheet. Clearly that's an issue that we need to do our level best to address. I don't deny that for one second. Yes, that's inequitable, no doubt about it. But, you know, our goal here is to enrich and educate kids and clearly this is a proven way to do it. You know, I did receive communication from people who I respect who say that they think we've got more homework in some situations than, than ought to be there. And like a lot of these points that are on here, absolutely. It takes time away from things and the cascading, hey, listen, I wasn't actually that great of a student. I know you're going to be blown away by that, Madam President, but it's really true. You know, I really struggled in, in school a lot of times and yeah, I mean, you get to a point where if you're not an ace at this stuff, you're just spending your entire life staring at these worksheets and trying to wrap your head around this stuff. It's tough, no doubt about it, you know, but hey, it's becoming really smart or awesome in a subject area or multiple subject areas is, it takes a toll on you, you know? And if we, and we look at the concept of college prep, right? I mean, no good college, self-respecting college is going to not give homework to students.
All right, on the contrary, at UC Davis in calculus, we were not held to our math homework. We were given math practice, wasn't graded, we didn't have to turn it in. But back to your point, if I wanted to be more successful than I actually ended up being on my math tests, I would have practiced more, but I did just good enough to pass.
Well, people, people who go to UC Davis.
Sorry, just to.
People who go to UC Davis are boring wonks and so that's one reason why they're that way. But no, I mean, even in that scenario, it's like UC Davis, I know because my sister went there, 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 some of the smart kids wind up going there. And it's like, hey, here's a packet of, you know, exercises associated with this coursework, right? Your typical UC Davis student, and I've known many, they're going to take that and they're going to, they're going to look that over, right? They're going to, they're going to look that over and that's going to give them a signal as to whether they're ready for the test and all that kind of stuff, right? You know, so as a prelude to that, we are giving kids or empowering teachers to give kids a homework assignment. Maybe they're going to grade it based on 10% or 20% or something like that. So that's different from that, but the goal is the same. And that is to, you know, through a process of repetition and rigor to kind of prepare these students for taking these tests and knowing the material. And then college prep. Thank you.
Yeah, so to not disagree with you, I think in a way, having that suggested practice is really helpful because students, it teaches students to be in tune with where they're at in their mastery, right? If I was more responsible of a freshman calculus student, I would have recognized, or I did recognize, but I just didn't have the energy for it, that I needed more practice and I would have taken the initiative to do more practice. And if we are, if we're implementing that in our, in our high school levels or even our middle school levels. But the caveat being that that's not necessarily graded, which is a hard thing to teach for students. Like, because most of those kids, you know, it's not graded, I'm not doing it. But then to teach that lesson and say, look, if you would have done these five practice questions and realized that you couldn't do three of them, then we could have had a conversation about it. And that teaches, that, that teaches, I didn't have that skill going to college. So I mean, and this is very personal to me and like, obviously everybody's origin story is different, but that's just one example of, of that type of, of experience. So do we want to create an inequity in grading for students by making them have 25% of their grade is homework when they don't even have the opportunity to do homework, quite literally?
But you haven't solved the inequity. If you turn the graded homework into a sort of like a, a little pack of, of advice or, or exercises that are not going to be graded.
Do the homework and they still can do, they still are doing well on the, on the assessments. Or on the, or on the classwork, they don't need to do the homework. If you're making kids do homework that need, that don't necessarily need to do the homework and they're not doing it and that's bringing their grade down, I don't know, there's just, there's a nuance there.
But I thought you were holding up the, whatever they had at UC Davis, the ungraded. It was like an ungraded, sort of like non-homework assignment.
Holding it up, I was just giving it as an example.
So didn't you say that that's something we could do instead?
What I'm saying is that that would be, that could be an option to you give for, for teachers of particular topics. And it's not, nothing's going to be a blanket policy, anything that's going to be like, this is the one-size-fits-all, there's no such thing as that. But to say this is, this is practice, you know, and to say, hey, I see you're struggling with this while we're working on this in class together and I've taught you the skills you need. Maybe practice these five and let me know if you need extra help on them tomorrow before we move on. That, and, and that's not graded, so you're not holding them to, to that standard. And if they can't get to it at home, you bring them back around and then you say, hey, let's do this during lunchtime. Or, you know, you, let's, maybe you should go to the after-school, you know, homework helper, I don't know. And if we don't have those things, then that's a whole nother conversation to have.
But you could do those things without, with, with homework also, you could bring the student in during, during lunch to talk about it. The equity problem is not affected by that scenario because, because the student who has the, you know, the home environment, it's conducive to preparing the student for class, is going to go through the exercises and the teacher's going to talk about it at, at back-to-school night and stuff like that. And so, so that sort of on-the-ball home structure or that, that parent who has more available time to help their child is going to do that work. But a child who does not have that structure at home is not going to do that, that non-graded exercise. So I don't see that that solves the equity problem.
May I make a point of procedure? In that we have pretty much moved into debate, there is another slide that talks about next steps and I would like to get through that. This is a time for clarifying questions before we really dive into arguing about what we're going to do about it.
I think just to break the awkward silence for a moment, the point of this debate that doesn't need to go on any further because obvious, for obvious reasons, is that we are not the, the people to have these conversations. It's going to be our site representatives and our DLC team and it's going to be a very long, deep conversation that's going to be taking place ongoingly until, you know, potentially we come to some sort of best solution. Nothing's going to be perfect for every situation, but it's obviously a conversation to, to be had and, and to bring back up again, I think. And I feel like with the nods in, in the room, that's probably the way most of us are feeling. Okay, so considerations, I'm looking at my slides. I thought. I don't see that slide on my, on my slides, but okay.
If I was just going to make a rec.
It's like the third one.
Yeah, it's toward the front.
Yeah, just, yeah, just go back to the front.
Gotcha, thank you. Oh, I see. All right, you guys want to?
We started off with this, so.
Again, if, if I was going to make a suggestion, I would probably, again, as I talked, I bombarded the DLC secondary group today. They're like, what are you doing in here today? Anyway, I was talking to them about, this is what's going to be talking, what we're going to be talking about. And everything that we kind of talked about in DLC came true. Up here on the board, it's a, it's a deep conversation about equity versus what we need to do for our kids to be learning in their classrooms. And everything that you guys are talking about is exactly the conversations that DLC's been having. It's interesting that we would like to, one, go back and have more deeper conversations with our departments, our grade levels, our DLCs and see, not maybe come up with not a no homework policy, but maybe adjust our homework policy if we wanted to make changes. If we brought you some other districts that they use or some of the things that maybe are recommendations that would come from DLCs. So to, one, talk about the equity issues and, and the family issues that we're talking about, but also defining what that homework is and what is not. So we would like to have more time, again, like you're talking about, if we were going to make policy changes, what, what they might recommend or if they're going to recommend any at all coming from our departments and our grade levels, if I'm, if I'm articulate at all on this.
You know, as Mr. Marchand shared, they're really the experts that are kind of seeing the benefits or the issues related to it. So I think that would be echoing Jay, a great starting point to have them have those discussions.
You said the topic at this week's DLC, where was the homework policy topic going to be discussed?
For elementary DLC this Friday.
Oh, elementary.
Four or five things that are on our agenda.
Okay. Yeah, this is an ongoing. It, it is, but that's okay. One of the things that is our responsibility is to stay attuned to progress in what our responsibility is, which is the education of all of our students. You know, back, back to that mantra again, because what, what works for special ed students may not work for our AP students and vice versa. So just, just keep us abreast of what we're talking about. I like our discussions, by the way.
And please, any research that you guys come across, send us, send it our way.
Yeah, that was going to be a caveat, not a caveat, that I, but along those lines, it's important to have the conversations, but also, you know, what, what everybody else is doing isn't always the right thing either. It's what's research-based, what is, what is the latest show us when we look at performance or student outcomes versus, you know, different types of policies. So, you know, evidence-based research is always useful, obviously. Also, I'm also getting nods from behind you as well. I realize why I'm confused because this says considerations at the top, but mine says recommended next steps, board policy considerations, and then how's that list?
Your presentation changed from the one that was submitted for the board.
Okay.
Titles changed.
That was just an aside, but I'm not lost anymore. That's what's important. Yes? Anymore? Questions of clarification?
Yeah, and maybe you already said this, but as far as where you got the breakdown, like the middle school versus the high school, what, what were the sources for like the advantages and disadvantages?
Our DLC reps.
Okay.
And they'll go, and they will tell me that they needed more time to get more information.
Our DLC reps also had some conversations with some additional teachers.
You needed a word cloud. Just kidding.
It is a very passionate conversation with our teachers and our, our community and everybody else on board that's.
And I don't think that anybody in this room would, would argue necessarily, I could be wrong, I guess, that reading isn't extra important. And some type of reading outside of school time is going to be essential for all students. So I would never say no homework, so no reading at home or no assigning reading at home, like that is really important for all, for all subjects.
No, I think we need to kind of as a group decide what the purpose of homework is and then find a process to make sure that the homework that is assigned meets that goal. We just need to be real careful and intentional as we approach creating a homework policy that fits the needs of all of our kids.
Is there something from here you would like for us to work on first?
I think that first, I'm speaking with myself, of course, I think that first step there, conforming an agreement or a broad agreement among our, our leadership and our teachers about what is homework and what do we want homework to, what role do we want it to play? How is it going to serve our students? And that's the foundation for everything else.
Yeah, what is homework or what isn't homework? And how, what are the objectives that we're trying to meet with what we consider homework?
And I think it would be important to also find out what currently exists. I mean, do we really have students that are doing five, six hours of homework a night? I guess that's not reasonable if that's happening.
There are some similar stories coming out. And how do we mitigate that?
I just have one comment, kind of question, like looking at specifically high school, which I actually see more importance with high schoolers, with homework. But like when I'm looking at the high school advantages of no homework policy, I'm seeing like very, sorry, let me just take a quick here. I'm sorry, high school disadvantages of a no homework policy, they seem like very objective statements. And then looking at like high school advantages of a no homework policy, it just seems really subjective, like, I don't know, I don't, I would, I would like to see like a little bit more objective, I guess. Those seem like subjective statements and it's kind of like a high school reporting what they believe in. The other ones seem more objective, looking at.
So would you also say that the survey for parents and guardians could be useful? A survey for teachers and or staff could be useful, but also a survey from students could be, could also be useful. You know, they may also identify advantages to homework that maybe we don't see from their perspective, being 20-plus years removed from high school student status. Speaking for myself. I, on that, the grades would be based on exams only is not true, but that was, that's my own sticking point. I don't think that if you have no homework, doesn't mean that you're grading at, in the high school level on only exams. It was just one of the bullet points on the disadvantages of a no homework policy. The very first thing says grades would be based on exams only, yeah, that's false, but okay. Somebody had that opinion.
So, so would you like DLC to come back at some date to be determined and kind of give you an update on the status of what Mr. Landau was talking about as far as kind of that conversation, starting with the definition of it and making sure it's coherent to what, what they should be learning as well?
Yeah, and maybe an outline on, on how to make progress toward a more unified vision for the district. So like, how long that may take, it may take a year and a half to get to that point. We may be bringing it back for a final decision, you know, in March of 25. Ouch. But you know, or is it, you know, does the group think, you know, what are going to be our, kind of our, our goalposts in a sense? In terms of what you just asked, whatever is reasonable, you know, not, not next month.
Okay, we will, we will come back at some point to be determined future date with kind of number one, hash you a little bit more with our DLC reps and maybe an outline of kind of what we see as kind of discussion points along the way, getting there.
Yeah, that sounds great. Any other questions or comments?
My, my only comment in, in sitting, listening and, and thinking back to, to is you have, you probably have five different opinions and definitions at the table up here, which is what we need to remember.
Let's all talk the same language, let's start there. That would be great. There's no public comment signed up for this. Did any of you all folks in the audience want to say anything else that hasn't been said or that you'd like to emphasize? Are we ready to roll forward with where we're at at this point? Please.
I've been trying not to.
Oh, gosh, no, that's, this is not the space for that.
I, I just, I feel like one of the ideas that wasn't present there, you know, you talk about college prep, but there's also life prep. And our jobs have become increasingly more important to teach life skills. And I really do believe if we can better define homework, you know, no one fails because they're not doing homework and, and, and try to address some of these inequity issues. I, I think a little bit of work outside of the school day is important, meaningful work, of course. But I think we all can agree that to some extent, as an adult, our job outside of our profession, there's always something we're doing to get ready for the next day. And life is hard and life is a lot of work and I think that we need to teach kids that. I think that we need to teach kids the value of responsibility and time management. And I just, I feel like homework can serve that purpose in some way. Again, maybe more at the junior high and high school level, as we're getting geared up to kind of going out on their own. So I just wanted us to consider that as well.
Yeah. Yes. I don't know that we need to take particular action. Well, yeah, but I mean, as far as like a formal... I mean, if there is a particular motion that anybody would like to put forward, now is a great time to do that. But otherwise, it sounds like staff has direction and can come up with a reasonable timeline to revisit it with us.
We'll put it on DLC agenda for discussion and start with the definition and also find out what we currently have. I'm guessing it's all over the board. And see if we can't come up with something that, what are our goals, what are our expectations for homework?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to our DLC reps who are sitting in the front row over there. I appreciate that. First and second row.
We're here every other Wednesday. Come anytime. Thank you. Feel free to stay if you want. Not a whole lot left. Is everybody good?
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the work.
All right, we can move along to, let's see, we are at business services?
Business services.
All right. 5.2.1, discussion action, approval of design-build entity for walk-in cooler/freezer combination addition at bakery.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I have with me Vincent Sero, who is the Director of Nutrition Services for the school district, bringing forward the design-build entity approval for the project, the walk-in cooler-freezer combination expansion at the bakery out at the Corporation Yard. Back in June, the board directed staff to circulate, number one, decided that design-build project delivery method was appropriate for this project, and then directed staff to circulate RFQP, RF, Request for Qualification slash Proposals for the project, which we did. We actually ended up doing it twice. The first time, there were some mistakes made by both of the parties that proposed. So they were rejected, and then we redid the process again. This time, we had four companies that qualified to submit statements of qualifications and proposals for the project. However, only two did. Those two contractors were evaluated on their qualifications, things like how long their firm has been in business, their insurability, their financials, their current commitments, do they have the capacity to do the work, past project experiences with design-build projects, safety record, and letters of reference from other customers. Additionally, they submitted a proposal for the project in a separate packet to the district, which discussed their ideas for the project, what project enhancements they may bring to the table, the equipment that they propose to supply, what their services were going to be regarding pre-construction, going through the design. The design of this project will be reviewed and approved by the City of Chico, because the Corporation Yard is in the City of Chico and not under the jurisdiction of the Division of the State Architect, like a school is, and then their overall cost. So those two proposals and qualification statements that we received were from UBC, United Building Contractors of Chico, and Modern Building Contractors of Chico. Based on the evaluation by the committee, which included myself, and Vincent Sero, and Chris Click, who is his mechanical worker, who oversees all of his mechanical equipment, helped us to evaluate the technical side of the proposals. The committee brings forward the recommendation that the board approve United Building Contractors for the project. So you know, the cost proposals were not the only thing evaluated, but they were very close in the case of both contractors. Modern Building Company proposed $1,217,175,000, and United Building Contractors proposed $1,213,905. So within $4,000 of each other. The main differences between the two proposals that we received were, one of the contractors, UBC, had an enhancement, where they decided to relocate an electrical panel to another location, therefore allowing more space for our buses and our trucks to maneuver around the building. So it was a beneficial enhancement, and it was included in their price. The other big difference was the horsepower of the equipment. They proposed four units with much higher BTUs than the other company had only two units with less BTUs. So we determined that they were a better value, United Building Contractors, and that's why we're bringing it forward to you tonight. If you have any questions, Vince is here with me, and we can answer them now.
I recognize the UCB. Well, we're all familiar with Modern, but UCB is a firm that we have worked with in the past. So both of these companies are familiar to us and are local.
Yes, they have both provided very beneficial services to the district in the past. Modern is a current contractor at McManus.
McManus, yes.
UBC isn't currently working for the district.
Well, I like what the UBC suggestions on the panel and the increase in the BTUs. Was there a, the committee recommended UCB, correct?
UBC, yes.
You're looking at a dyslexic board member who gets words all the time.
We know what you're talking about.
When you're ready, Madam President.
If there's no further questions from the board and no public comment, I can call for a motion.
I move approval of the recommendation from the screening committee on the letting of the contract to UBC.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Lando. Any further discussion, Board? Okay. Our last vote was unanimous, so we can all vote, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. It passes. Thank you. Our next item...
We want chocolate chip cookies as soon as you're up and running.
We can do that.
This district makes the most amazing chocolate chip cookies.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is 5.2.2, a discussion action, removal of existing trees at Pleasant Valley High School's baseball batting cages.
Thank you. Tonight, we have another person here accompanying us, teacher from Pleasant Valley High School and varsity baseball coach, John McAlutis, is here to help answer any questions you might have on this topic. Right now, the baseball team has one batting cage, and since the block schedule implementation at the high school, the hours are severely limited for practice time while it's light enough outside. And we have three teams that are trying to get time in the batting cage during practice. So they want to, it's very exciting, they want to add additional batting cages to the baseball facility. So in order to do so, as you can see in your board packet, you have a layout of where the new cage will be and where the current cage is. As you can see, the large rectangles side by side. And to the right, you will see some trees that are along the fence line that intrude into that area. So tonight, we are bringing forward a request to remove those trees in order to facilitate room for the batting cage, the new full-size batting cage. John and his team have spoken with the neighbors, just to make sure that they're okay with the removal of the tree, and they're, in fact, in favor of removing the trees. Most of them are just ones that have sprouted up, you know, all on their own. So we can open it up for questions at this time.
Julie, because I'm, I live a block from this work site. So I went down to take a look at what was in the picture versus what I could see when I went over there. So I'm lost. I couldn't figure out where exactly this is along, is it behind the bleachers?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's just west of the bleachers.
Okay.
Along the property line with the neighbors.
Yeah, if that's the answer, then now I know exactly what this is representing.
There was no budget information included that I saw.
I'm sorry about that. I thought it was.
I mean, it could be an oversight on my part, too.
It's, yeah, it's in that first paragraph. It's a sports booster-funded project.
What first paragraph? Oh, see, I always go to the bottom, look for like fiscal implications. Sorry.
Should have included it down there. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Oh, it is in there. I just...
Oh, it is there, too.
Kind of. Okay, so it's fully funded by the boosters. It's not, it's expensive to remove trees, like, really expensive.
It is. And it will be costly, and be very beneficial, but it will be costly. But John's already got some quotes, and he's working on narrowing it down.
Okay, I need to just tell you that I'm never a fan of removing a trees for any reason except for safety. I'm speaking specifically to you. And also, I played varsity softball for four years, but in Chester, and we had to practice in the gym because it was snow. And the only time that we got to get on the grass in the early season was when we came to the valley. So just so you know, it's doable. I'm just totally kind of yanking your chain right now. Like, yeah, we all just put up with what we have given, right? If I had to practice in the gym, in the batting cages, among the baseball team, you guys could probably figure it out. But these trees are in the way of everybody's space, including the neighbors. And if the neighbors are a fan of that, too. I think as a neighbor, my only concern would be my energy costs going up, because you wouldn't have that shading anymore. But, yeah. Yeah, and there's no map provided for my reference, and I don't really feel like digging onto the map right now. I have it open, but it's not that important. I just wanted to make you have to stand up there even longer.
I'd be happy to comment. I feel like I have a couple strikes ahead against me.
No, you don't. You really don't.
Just because I'm a Cal Poly grad.
That was good baseball terminology you just used right there. Well done.
So number one, I'm here representing the Mustangs against the Yaggies. So there's that. And then I also teach math, math lab, and I use IXL, and I assign homework, and there's all kinds of things. We did, this is my sixth year as a teacher at Pleasant Valley High School. I'm kind of new to the game as a teacher, so you guys, it's well, you guys are beyond my pay grade. But this is my third career. The first one didn't quite work out.
You grew out of it.
So, but anyway, since I've been here, we've started another freshman program. There's now 60, approximately 60 kids that are participating. We have the one baseball field, and so it is a challenge for us to practice in our facility with just the one field. And this is going to increase our space tremendously. The tree line that we are talking about, four of the five trees are volunteer trees, and they share the fence line. There will still be foliage along the tree line. It's just, the one major one is called, just I knew you'd want to probably know which.
I saw the species names.
It's the, it's an Atlas alder, is what's, or, my glasses are not helping. Cedar. It's an Atlas cedar. So, and anyway, this is all fundraised by our program with golf tournaments and car raffles and different things of that nature. And I do have a good price and a reputable company that's ready to start at the end of the week if we get an approval tonight, so.
Julie, is this the coach that I called on because there was somebody stealing gravel from behind the bleachers at Pleasant Valley?
That might have been me using a shovel, taking the gravel, putting it in my pickup.
Yeah, shovel and a pickup. And I sent an email to Julie and said, do you realize somebody's stealing the gravel?
I did have approval from my athletic director, for the record.
She did tell me that it was approved. But yes, it was you then with the pickup and the shovel stealing gravel from what was left over at the...
That would be me. Anyway, sometimes less is more, so I think I'm just going to stop talking.
When you're ready, Madam President.
I'm still trying to figure out where it is on the side. I pulled up the map.
So it's not the sheet, like the trees that are like parallel with the manzanita that kind of provides shade for all the spectators, it would be kind of behind the batting cage.
Yeah, behind it.
They're sort of like tucked in the corner. It's the big one that's tucked in the corner that's sort of out of the way. It does, I've had branches actually fall. It's big, and it probably means...
So not parallel with the road, but perpendicular to the road?
Correct.
Cool.
Along that fence line.
I was really good in geometry, just so you know.
Probably had some homework assignment that helped.
Calculus is what really did me in, those differentials. Great. I have no further questions. Sorry for giving you a rough time.
I expected to get, be given a hard time.
Oh, good. I'm glad I could deliver. It's about this time that I start getting kind of silly, too. Any other questions or comments? Everybody's getting sick of me, I think. They're like, let's move along, Dolby. Don't confirm. Just kidding. I'm sorry. Silly. Okay, public comment? Not seeing any. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move approval of the proposal for removal.
I second.
All right, we have a motion for approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
See if those can be chipped up and use those wood chips somewhere else on campus that might need it. Okay, right, it's my turn still to move on. 5.2.3, discussion action, charter schools, Measure K projects requests. I'm excited about this one.
Yeah, we have some, some great projects up at Forest Ranch Charter School. The first one is the installation, removal and installation of some new doors that have just reached their useful age, so they need to be removed and replaced. And the installation of some basketball, it says basketball hoops, but it's actually the backstops. They already purchased the backstops out of other funds, but they don't have the ability to put them up, because they bought steel ones, and they're very, very heavy. So they had to bring in a contractor to help them get those installed. And then the pricing, you've already reviewed the pricing on the in-wall tables for their cafeteria building, but the price came, the final price came in 13,000 more. So you previously approved 75,000, and now it's 83,000 and change for those eight new in-wall tables. So there's just a price increase that you're approving for that tonight.
Do we know why? I mean, not that it's...
Because we were trying to, we used what he thought what the price was going to be on our initial approval. But then when he gave the final quote, it just was higher.
But it still falls within Forest Ranch's...
Yes.
... measure K?
Yes, it's still their Measure K fund. So it's just sort of accounting adjustment there. And then...
And then they have some really cool, but really old metal play equipment and a really large yard in the back of the campus. It's a great campus, by the way, but some of the equipment is a little bit too tall, and it's a round metal play structure that they haven't allowed the kids to play on for quite some time because it's a little too high off the ground for their liking, so they applied for and received a grant from a company called Game Time to add a new playground to the site, actually a whole new play structure like you see at some of our elementary schools, and then also some individual play equipment that, that can be placed in other areas to spread the kids out a little bit more. So those three projects are what we're bringing forward tonight for your review and approval.
So just for clarification, the 250,000 listed here, is that all the Measure K funds? Is that Measure K plus the grant?
That's Measure K. The grant is separate.
I was very impressed with the, the play structures that they've selected, they're pretty cool.
Yeah, I think the kids are really going to like them.
Yeah.
The theme is great up there, so I don't know if you all got a chance to look at it, but it kind of looks woodsy, outdoorsy, kind of play equipment will fit right in.
Hearing no additional questions and seeing no public comment, I'll call for a motion.
I move approval of this expenditure for Forest Ranch Charter.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Member Robinson and a second from Member Tennis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So exciting. Their metal equipment is, it's a, a lot. Ila has played on those tall slides, was fascinating. Okay, up next, we're going to 5.3, which is the Board Discussion Action on Chico Unified School District Board Self-Evaluation.
So this is just in here so that the Board and the community is aware, is aware that the survey is out, it is attached here in the agenda, it is also on our website. Erica has made sure that it has gone out to all Chico Unified staff, it has gone out to our families, and it's also posted on our website and Facebook.
Great, and the deadline is November 7th, it's on the agenda, I just, I clicked off of it and now I can't remember, it's like in five days, the 5th?
Sunday, November 5th.
Sunday, Sunday, November 5th. And that, it also includes members of the public, is that right? Yeah. And so did it, it get sent out to any additional media outlets or just through our own networking channels?
Just through our own networking channels.
Okay. All right, great, that is, on here is Discussion Action, but I don't think that there's really any action to take.
We don't need the action unless the Board wants to give us further directions.
Yep, no, and we'll, we'll receive the feedback from that at the next meeting?
Correct.
Great. Any other questions or comments, Board? All right, we'll move right along. Item six is Board Member Request to Agenda Is An Item. No Board Member Requests Were Submitted For This Meeting, and with that, we will move into closed session. Do we have any public comment on closed session? All right, then the Board will now go into closed sections, closed session. I think Kelly did.